Like to take the meeting started? Got the music being tight there. Key, go forward.
Dr. Cortelina?
Here.
Mr. Dottry?
Here.
Mrs. Sanna?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Palma? Mr. Petrazino? Mr. Rapidcore?
Here.
Ms. Suterman?
Here.
Dr. Modra?
Here.
Ms. Viella?
Here.
Mr. Sun?
Here.
Want to speak?
My congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Open public meetings.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of continuing ten meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Montville Township Board of Education provided the public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location that was posted at the Montville Township Municipal Building, all Montville Public Schools, the Montville Public Library, the Montville Township Board of Education Administrative Office Building, the district website, and advertised in the Daily Record and the Montville Tap into the board's official newspapers from January twenty eighth, twenty twenty four.
Ms. Viella? Mr. Sun? Uh, sir? Dr. Portis?
Yeah, so we're gonna start off with some stuff that happened in the recent past. So, on the eighth, the New Jersey Music Educators Association accepted two MTHS students to the All-State Chorus, and they were Daviani Sharma and Alex Tarnoff. Ms. Sharma was accepted for the second year in a row, and Ms. Tarnoff was ranked as the number six tenor, second in his first year of conditioning. In addition, Joseph Amoroso was one of four students in the state who was awarded the New Jersey Governor's Award for the Arts in Education. We are exceptionally proud of these two students, and we appreciate the leadership, mentorship, and guidance provided by the teacher, Ms. Tyte, too. Also, on May thirteenth, Ben Harrison, Noah Leppenkauzer, as well as Sophia and Mika Calaris, Sophia, Jill, Jirilla, and Reese Vermit, organized and hosted the National Mera Bone Program Registry Event at MTHS. An MTP finds matches for bone marrow and stem subtransplants for patients suffering from leukemia, lymphoma, and other life-threatening blood diseases. Interested MTHS students have to be over eighteen and register online before getting any side of the treatment. Also earlier this month, students in biotechnology were the first students in New Jersey to take the BACD exam, and they are now certified to work in labs across the nation. On May sixteenth, thirty-seven Willie Mason graduates returned to elementary school with the Junior Achievement Program. These former students empowered future entrepreneurs at Willie Mason with a day of career readiness. And then eight contestants went from May sixth to May seventeenth earlier this month. Students will hear back with their scores earlier July. And then also starting tomorrow through Friday will be the make-up dates for students who missed exams or had multiple exams scheduled on the same day. Now moving to some other stuff happening in the present. Starting off with junior Rashid Hassan, who is an AP art, AP Studio Art student, and he is currently part at work on a mural that he has been creating in one of the hallways at MTHS. This mural is a labor of love that Rashid has been paying for most of his school year, and we can't wait to see the finished product. Also, the MTHS bands, orchestras, and choir concerts today and yesterday consisted of both large and small groups. There's also student artwork reflecting the music each evening, and the concerts were free to anyone paying attention.
The baseball team holds a record of fourteen and twelve, and they play Sparta on Thursday for the first round of the national league tournament. The softball team holds a record of nine and fifteen. Junior pitcher Daniel Avigia recently had a two-hundred season strikeout on the mound. And their next game versus Ulta Pan is Thursday for the state tournament. The boys' lacrosse team holds a record of nine and eight, and they play Lakeland tonight before Bendham in states on Thursday. The girls' lacrosse team has a season record of nine and ten. They had a big winning streak and hopes to continue it versus Cranford tomorrow for states. Boys' ball holds a steady season record of ten and four. Senior Eli Hoffman finished in second place overall in the entire state of New Jersey at the county tournament while winning the individual group two New Jersey state title. The girls' ball team is on fire with an eight-and-one record, and the team plays in the NJC tournament tomorrow morning. Boys' tennis has a record of five and fourteen and is looking to get a win against Sparta tomorrow for the first round of the state tournament. The girls' black football team ended their season over the weekend against Redwood in states. They finished the season five, two, and three. Senior captains Abby Viella and Courtney Zvenkac will play one final game at Key University as they were selected to be on the North team for the Phil Simms North-South All-Star Game. And the track and field team recently had big place finishers in many areas of the sport and county society. It included Laharitaza's sixth-place finish in the one-hundred meter, Abby Viella's sixth in the javelin, Dariush Shipjacks fourth in the pole vault, Alexa Amoroso, Sophie Hamer, Sierra Turner, Laharitaza third place in the four-by-four hundred meter relay, and Alex Kowalszczek third place in the eight-hundred meter in addition to his gold medal performances in both the thirty-two-hundred meter and the sixteen-hundred meter. And Alex was able to improve on all of his school records in all these three races. The girls' freshman team also won counties at the freshman sophomore county championship two weeks ago. Now some things happening in the future. The second annual Montville Large Team Hockey Cornwall Tournament will take place on Saturday, June eighth. It's fifty dollars for any team under eighteen and a hundred dollars for any adult team. The goal is to raise the most money for our hockey team. The first annual combined MTHS Science Symposium will be on May twenty-ninth at six-thirty P.M. beginning in the high school auditorium. Students in science, design, and research, research in molecular biology and biotechnology classes will be presenting the highlights of the research they have performed throughout the year. And on Friday, May twenty-fourth, seniors will be having their senior breakfast at the Mansion of Allen Lakes. And finally, on Thursday, May thirtieth, the senior prom will be at the Grove. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and good luck this week here.
All right, Willie Mason. So we have the principal here, Mr. Malucy, coming up here from his office, coming up. Talked to us about the Trax Marketplace Club. Just before the meeting started, we were able to get quick presentations from everybody. Very exciting, these entrepreneurs of the future making some money for their college funds already, so I love it. Good stuff. Good.
Now. Now. Describe the other one.
All right, thank you, Dr. Cortelina. I'm joined by the Willie Mason students in fifth grade who participated this year in our Trax program, so thank you and friends and family for coming tonight. And what I'd like to do is introduce the teacher who oversaw the program, tell you a little bit about it, and then two of our students can speak specifically to their product.
Hi, this is Autumn. This is my eighth year joining Trax at Willie Mason. It's so exciting to see each year new things and new ideas that they always come to the Trax marketplace with. I just wanna introduce everyone who's here, and then I'll let two of our friends speak. So Jack, you want to hand up? You see it, I can see. Riley? Penny? Regina? Bella? Olivia? And Arika? And Leah? Remember? And Leo back here. And Regina and Bella are just gonna come up. I'll just tell you a little bit. You guys can sit down. Okay? Come on over here.
They're basically...
So just tell them how you came up with your idea.
Yeah, just gotta pull it close.
Okay, last summer, during summer camp, Bella taught me how to crochet, and since then, we've loved doing it together. And so when Trax came around, we thought, why not just create something? So over here, you can see some of the stuff that we made. And yeah. We built a trap, so we're very excited because it's something that we're very passionate about. We love procheting. We have like designer, I've designed a lot of things. We've like come up with ideas of what to make because it's fun for us. And we have something over there. We have taken orders too because we've sold out of some things, and it's just really fun for us.
Love taking orders already. You have to be a nap next. So thank you so much for sharing. We also have, I also have my cartoon book, so I'm excited to put that up in the board office. So thank you for that. And we look forward to seeing your future ideas, you know, when they're on apps and they show them on our social media. So thank you so much for coming out and sharing tonight. You know what? And then Valerie here, we're gonna set you up for your presentation. All right. So the next is Valerie here, the AP club. We've talked to her.
Good evening, everyone. I'm very proud to introduce our extraordinary music teacher, Mrs. Samantha Ivins, and our equally extraordinary media specialist, Mrs. Mary Fritz, Newsweek, New York Grace, well. And I want to give a special shout-out to MEF for providing us with the equipment to do our videos. We're very happy to use it, and we're learning to be broadcasters and newscasters each day. Mrs. Ivins is going to introduce our...
Good evening. As Dr. Kennedy said, thank you again, MEF, for providing the equipment so that our students could learn how to kind of dip their toes in newscasting. We did six broadcasts this year, all centered on our character education curriculum and tiny events at our school. So without further ado, I would like our four fifth graders in Abyta, Bilal Miazzi, Zoe Leboe, Skara Wanger, and Paul Seepfleman to come up and introduce our video.
Hi, we are Paul, Dreya, Zoe, and Bilal. And we are fifth-grade members of Valley View AP Club. The funding, the funding made possible by the Montville Education Fund, our AP club is made up of four to fifth grade students. We are the creator and hosts of the Positive Perspective. We have been learning about different aspects of creating a news broadcast. We have been working, we have been hard at work on both fashion design and script writing, as well as working both behind and in front of the camera. Our efforts have made it possible to bring Valley View School's latest happenings to our school and the public. Each month, we have been focusing on our interviews on our panda pride character traits.
Our favorite character was, its characteristic was positive. In this month's broadcast, one of our interviews was with Ms. Caitlin Smith, our PTA president, whose hard work fundraising has allowed us to construct a new playground.
Thank you. For forty thousand dollars, that raised a lot of donations this year. How did you do this, and how did they... Let's find out. Ms. Smith, how did you get this? How did you take it?
Um, it took about five months to raise enough money to make the first half of the playground. And then once we won that in September, they were able to install it in February.
What did, what did you have?
So we are, we have a large base for playground value, and the playgrounds are very expensive. So we decided to break it up into two parts so that we could get, for the girls in our school this year, the chance to play on the first half of it while we raised money to finish building the second half of it.
How did you make?
We raised the money for the PTA fundraiser, like the X fund run. That was a big part of the money that we raised from the playground. We also had a fifty anniversary party for Value, and we raised a lot of money that way. And our health department raised a lot of money, so all that added together helped us buy the first half of the playground.
What did you charge us?
So it was paid for. We paid forty-five thousand dollars for the playground actually cost eighty-five thousand dollars. So we applied for what's called a grant where the company makes the playground, paid for a portion of it for us.
How, how do you...
We had a catalog from the front company, and he gave us a bunch of options. So we selected ones that we thought, ours can be mostly from that catalog.
What was the process?
So first, we had to ask them to run five teams, and they came to Value, walked around the whole playground, talked about where we wanted to break it apart to do the first half. And then he measured the pool area, he sent some options, so what we could put in there. I gave my feedback on what he first said, and then he revised it and sent me new ones. And then he put it out to all the families at Value, and they took a vote on which playground they liked the best, and asked for a few why.
What did, what did you do for us?
The color scheme, we got a couple of options, and this one has the most movement, and since it's Value's school cover, that's going to be my one.
Why, why do you...
Um, my kids have known it's Value for the last about twelve years, and thought throughout that time that it looked like the playground would be sustainable a little bit. And then I came to find out, you've had this playground for over twenty-five years. So I just thought it would be a nice addition to the school.
What was the cost to you?
Enough money.
How did you make?
Oh, we got to order from a company, so I didn't have to make any part of it. Once we made them, they brought in their own installer, and they shipped all the materials here and installed it, put it in the ground, put it in the ground for us.
Why, why, why did you change the playground to a different course?
It seemed like the other parts of the school were doing pretty well, and we had a couple of other ideas. We had recently done out our classroom for Value, so we went to stick with fixing up the outside.
Well, what is the main thing?
The main thing? I like that there's a little rock wall added to it and a couple of slides. So I think it looks pretty fine in my mind. And then we're looking to add an even bigger part for the next phase.
Does you want to tell us more?
I would say if what is, Scott found out that he been there before, once he started to recall for it. So making all the first, the initial decisions were hard.
I'm happy with it.
I'm happy with it. I think it will be better once we finish these two.
How long has, has it been? Has it been, does it date?
I'm glad I've been told it's been here for at least twenty-five years.
Thank you, everybody. It's wonderful to see the equal action, see the MEF grant that's helping us, and then just have a little interview showing us how we work with people. He just said the PTA's throughout the district and getting an interview. So that was exclusive stuff, so great stuff, I do appreciate it. How was the program? Well, I'm glad, yeah, all right, I love it, thank you. Thank you so much, thank you for teaching, so I can be here for us, appreciate that. Thank you.
All of everyone, and... Everybody turn around sideways. Okay, you're on this side, turn around this way. Okay? You want to turn, because that's, there you go. That's it. After Modra, you were lost in this, she probably... I hope you're in the area.
Yeah.
Look out here. Everybody look at me? You wanna look at me? Thank you. Again, we'll give everybody else a chance to take a picture inside it, but please look at me. Okay, parents, if you'd like to take a photograph. There you are, the parents are taking photographs. Great job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do you remember?
No, you can't. It's not, it's interesting. Thank you, everybody, appreciate that.
Okay, uh, this is Ms. Jordan Portis. Are you first to start, Mark? Okay.
So last week, I mean, you saw some wonderful stuff that's going on in the elementary schools and the grade. You get a nice variety, you have a lot of musical performances. And I've seen the entrepreneurial club, the AP clubs, that's wonderful stuff. Last week, we had Living Lessons, and that was my first Living Lessons, and that was wonderful. We had over forty-something presenters there, and the whole school participated. I got to as many of the different presentations as I could, but it was outstanding. Seeing the students participate and just the stories of how it was resonating, and then listening to the end, you're about to connect. You never know if you're connecting with the kids, and at the very end, when you ask them questions, you see that things were going on in their minds during the whole presentation. So I can't say enough about all the staff at Lazar, how they put it together, as well as Judy Godhelf and Diana Corkey, when she did a great job. So just incredible. And that was Judy's last one. So it happens every two years, so over the past twenty years, we've had ten presentations. Incredible, incredible production.
Yeah, let me just echo everyone else's comments as well. Living Lessons is truly amazing event. I have a lot of friends who live in other parts of the country, other towns, and it really does impress upon them what we're doing here. And bringing those speakers in and giving them a sense of passion, both, you know, some motivation and encouragement, and showing them how to persevere. It, it really does impact them whether they know it or not. You know what I was gonna say?
I actually, right after the program, sent an email to Tom. And what I said was, I wanted him to know how proud of us that we part of the district, and that we put in the work and time to produce and execute an incredible program like Living Lessons. And I asked him to fix it, Judy, and Danielle, and the rest of the staff. And I signed it from Rachel Fordham. Because if it wasn't for teachers, and, and parents, it would probably do fun. We can have a program like that. I mean, there's stories of compassion and acceptance and understanding, and it's just, um... Just really good stuff.
And we had so many parents, Judy just saying, helping out, and giving the whole event work, so it was good for them.
Okay, um, did we have a report?
No report.
Okay. Um, there is a lot of good news, as you've heard and continue to hear. Lots of good things happening in the school, please take a look. Uh, section G, committee reports. Finance facilities, Karen.
Uh, thank you, David. So right before we leave this evening, the finance and facilities committee met. We talked about summer and fall cattle projects, fees for animal and busing, rent fees for used facilities. And we also talked about an SDA grant, which the business office filled out and was awarded. So a special thank you to Katina Diane and the business staff. It was for a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars, and we're gonna be using that to the safety projects.
Okay, thank you. Michelle, curriculum.
Uh, just to note that the adoption of curriculum for refusal, how we get the college average reading on the...
Joe, policy personnel.
No report.
Okay. Mike Rapp for communications.
No report.
Christine, safety, security?
No report.
Okay. Now, at Hox, Celtic Lee's, New Jersey School Board Association, Karen.
Uh, thank you again. The board directors met on May third, and briefly, we talked about our finances. We had a financial update, NJSPA's excellent financial positioning. And a large part of that was due to a very successful workshop in twenty twenty-three. And this upcoming workshop is also expected to exceed the regular targets. NJSPA's block purchasing program has also exceeded expectations. There are three speakers already lined up during this year's workshop. Adam Selldow, senior director of education partnership for Roque Locks. John Munoz is a Reuters journalist, author, and motivational speaker. Has spent forty years with ABC, maybe you're familiar with his name. You probably are familiar with his base. He currently hosts the show, What Would You Do? And the third keynote speaker is Sonia Manzano, who's best known for playing Maria on Sesame Street. So maybe some of you remember that as well. Workshop also featured programs like Unson Hero, Stu Bobborn, and Steve King. Also discussed was the executive director's goals, governance one, had reboot. And there will be a federal advocacy task force looking at developing a group that would guide current and future NJSPA leadership during annual consideration regarding membership in national mutual organizations, support words. That's it.
Uh, sorry, my voice is heavy.
Uh, yeah, no.
I'm sorry. Okay, Morris County, four. Michelle.
Uh, yeah, the meeting was held on May second at Rockberry High School. Montville student Sophia Colaris actually received the Unson Hero scholarship for her work with her Girl Step Goldmore project and beyond with her stem cell donation initiative and awareness. for her work with her Girl Step Goldmore project and beyond, uh, with her stem cell donation initiative and awareness. Uh, as well, David Moakrak was recognized, uh, for his ten years as a service as the board member. And Joe Daughtry was also recognized for becoming both a certified board member and a master board member.
Congratulations. Quickly, ten years.
Ten years.
And Joe getting a master.
Yeah, that's good. You know, we said we never stopped moving, right?
That's right.
Okay. Uh, speaking of Joe, uh, Morris County Educational Services. Uh, they had a meeting, uh, maybe, uh, just general business as usual. But at our next meeting, we will be doing the utilization of the board directors. And Dr. Burns. Uh, Dr. Burns, uh, we had our community event on April twenty-fifth at CU House. We had over a hundred, uh, hundred community members attend, um, as great speakers. Uh, providers were there, information, um, to look into, uh, how to do another default. And, uh, lastly, I also was able to attend, uh, New Jersey Division Networks Annual District's Conference last Friday down in Land City. Um, there were from all the municipal offices at the state, we attend. You know, again, more workshops and stuff like that. Very, very good. Thank you. Charlie.
Uh, yeah, we had a must-. I met two weeks ago and we organized the board of directors and officers.
Uh, Joe, question, sorry. Uh, Karen, Cedar Hill Liaison.
Uh, Cedar Hill, uh, it homeschool met on May sixth. Um, we talked about some of their updates. There'll be a Dianadeomy in June for Diane and Siri. Uh, there will be funds there tomorrow, day twenty-second, a talent show on May twenty-fourth, a fourth grade wellness fair on May twenty-ninth, and Carnival Day on May thirtieth. And last is on June fourth, Teen Guarded Parent Organization for all Baytown Teen Guarded Parents.
That's a lot of fun. Okay, uh, Hildale, Charlie.
No report.
Joe, Valley.
Uh, David, that's years ago. So people didn't take that.
Uh, John is not here, Paul Mason, Mike Palmer is not here. I know that, uh, I think we might, so we recently had a few, uh, some kind of carnival or field day down there. It looked like it was well attended from Woodland and Jurassic Trail, but. Uh, Christine, Lazar.
So Michelle and I weren't unable to attend the meeting, but they were gracious enough to spend us their minutes. So I have them here. They had a virtual meeting on May thirteenth. Um, they talked about Living Lessons, um, STEAM Day, which will be on May thirty-first. Um, for the eighth grade dance, all, they talked about that. And all the eighth graders are invited to take pictures before they call Hala. They want to thank all the volunteers, um, and especially the MAF for providing two high school seniors with scholarships, which will be awarded to, um, which will be awarded, um, to prospective teachers at the senior award tonight. Uh, they had a book theater, which was, um, well-attended, and teachers got, um, the books. Um, for the promotion, there will be two tickets for the high school gym provided that day of practice for kids to take home. It will be streamed live and signed in the auditorium for overall families. Um, the PTC scholarships, they pick their winners for the senior award night. Um, and they want to thank, um, thank you so much from the teachers. They had a great week. It was, I guess, staff appreciation week. Uh, they had a luncheon in front of Bucos, uh, Bubacus, and ice cream. And that's that.
Uh, Mike Rock for High School. It's the, uh, last meeting, uh, of the year. Uh, we met on May eighth. Uh, most of the discussions were around the end of the year activities. So, uh, first is, uh, AP exams, uh, are mostly done at this point. Uh, there's still a makeup session, I think, that this Friday, for anyone who missed the AP exam writing contracts. And just, uh, NJSL testing for ninth and eleventh graders is also wrapping up. They also published a new final exam schedule, uh, taking into account the feedback that's been received over the past couple of, uh, sessions. Uh, showed that if you take AP exams or if you otherwise fall, I think it's a ninety-three average over the overall for the year, um, you could get exempt from the final exam, uh, so that does create a time and schedule at the end of the year for other things to happen. The teachers, they really appreciated the teacher appreciation lunch, though, as hell, back in, uh, the beginning of May. Uh, and in June, PTC is going to sponsor an additional teacher breakfast, uh, just to show appreciation for the teachers for the hard work that they do. Uh, other than that, and there's a lot of talk about the, uh, various seniors that are in progress and they've already started and will be continuing through the end of the school year with, with preservation. So it's exciting time for both seniors.
Okay, uh, moving on to negotiations. Karen, MTBA.
Uh, we are meeting on June third with association and meeting.
Charlie, MTAA.
I'm happy to report that they have successfully negotiated a four-year contract, and it's on the agenda for action tonight. I would like to thank all the boards that were involved in the process. And, uh, it was very, very enjoyable. We tried something new this year, just one-on-one, and it worked out very well. We had support from other groups, other individuals, but really was something I think we're not going to continue to look at in the future.
And Joe, TSIA. Uh, we're working with the representatives, the parents, who ask for the details. Okay, keep us informed. Okay, uh, first public participation section. Anyone wishing to make a comment to the board, please come to the microphone. Uh, items on the agenda. I can see the crowd is brushing the microphone right now. You know, we must be doing something right, folks. Okay, consent resolutions, items, uh, sections I through N. Okay, section I, the minutes. Any questions? J, questions? Uh, section K, Facilities Finance. And also, section L, Personnel.
I have comments on Personnel and we brought Mr. Tarnan.
Section, we'll hold just one second.
All right, so I'm just gonna read the, uh, first announcement about Judy, as we mentioned before. Judy Godell is, uh, in twenty-five years at Lazar as an English teacher, and she may be like no other. As the founder of Living Lessons, Judy has always met people where they are, helping them see the best in each other. Her dedication and run for her students embody Maya Angelou's words, "Best. People will forget what you said. People will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel." We are deeply grateful for her passion and dedication.
I did, I did, um. I was sad to hear that Judy's retiring, but on the other side, on, on the other hand, I'm, I'm happy that she's happy. And I wish her the best going forward. She is a landmark for inclusion, acceptance, and diversity, and a bulwark against prejudice, will gain the grace of it. She means a moral compass and a voice.
And I would also echo those comments by my colleagues up here. Uh, I've known Judy for a few years now, and she was an amazing teacher when my daughter had her. And I really applaud her efforts to keep the Living Lessons alive. That is, again, a truly amazing program, and I'm very thankful that she was here to set that up.
Yeah, I just, uh, I'd also just to say that it's very sad to see Judy Godell retiring. My daughter had her in Lazar, uh, pretty much. And, uh, she's excellent teacher. She's very inspirational and, uh, did a lot of work for the students to make sure that their time in Lazar was happy and very productive. And, uh, with all of our work and pulling together Living Lessons every single, uh, time, every two years, it was, uh, it's an amazing amount of work and that would be just extraordinary.
Charlie.
Yeah, I think that the thing with GBA is having a time, you know, this Thursday, uh, you know, in the department. He's kind of, I'm sure he has information, I mean, this poster. I also just thank all of the people that have designed what Judy got by, some of the message. I've been thanking her for many, many years and encouraging her to be a teacher, but not, but she did it and had very good relationship. Uh, even though we disagreed at times, but, uh, I wish her well and with all of us to be part of, uh, in the future. Thank you.
Yeah, I just, uh, I just really do hope to be, uh, know what would be like this, doing the content, the content, I just think that's really a special thing. And, uh, after all the books, I was like, I just want to, uh, very much.
Uh, also, also in that department, uh, in the English department, we have Nancy Goslin. She's retiring. She's dedicated seventeen years at teaching English language arts at Lazar. Nancy is known for open table discussions, where she encourages students to discuss ideas and questions about writing and literature. Her passion for student expression also led to scores of student-made magazines, um, showcasing some of the prowess for Nancy's influence that's left a mark on both her students and our community. We're also witness, uh, Nancy. So that's two big holes to fill at, at Lazar.
Okay, uh, section M, Curriculum. Comments, questions? Policy, comments, questions? Okay, go ahead, both of you, please.
Mr. Ralph.
Yes.
Mr. Daughtry.
Yes, abstain on page one, check number eight-three-three-zero.
Dr. Cordelina.
Yes.
Mrs. Sarah.
Yes, abstain, section I, minutes.
Mr. Rappaport.
Abstain, section I, abstain, L dot six, yes to everything.
Ms. Sherman.
Yes, abstain, I, minutes.
Dr. Oberg.
Yes, everything.
Okay, uh, on to our second public comment session. Uh, if anyone has a comment, please come to the microphone. Seeing none, we'll move on to old business, general forum comments, new business. Uh, I did have something to raise real quick, you know, mine. I sent you all an email about board goals, and I heard back from several of you. Um, right now, the consensus is for goals three, four, five, definitely. Those goals, if adopted by the board, would be, the Board of Education will increase communication with the community to ensure transparency and continued collaboration. The Board of Education will establish a, a process to measure school wellness and climate and use this data to inform practice to create positive growth, engage students, and a healthy sense of belonging to the district. And the other goal is, the Board of Education will attract, develop, and retain excellent quality staff with a focus on relevant professional development, mindfulness, and cultural responsiveness, and twenty-first century teaching strategies. Did anyone have a comment on those goals?
Uh, just, I agree with Dave. We were talking about the suggested twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-five board goals.
Correct.
And numbers three, four, five.
Three, four, five. Those were the top vote getters.
I just have a question, Dave. I don't have it in front of me. The third one that you mentioned?
Yes. Uh, it is to attract, develop, and maintain excellent quality staff with a focus on relevant professional development, being mindful, and cultural responsiveness, and twenty-first century teaching strategies.
So I have a question. What is mindfulness and what is cultural? What does the next?
Responsiveness.
Responsiveness mean?
Yeah, I mean, well, first of all, these are just suggested, so we're just getting it narrowed down. And then when we narrow it down like we did last time, then we'll have a board discussion of if it's defined what we want to do, what the action plans will be added to that, but. So those of the responsiveness is just, you know, being aware, just a similar one we did on the board, you know, being aware of our community, how it's changing. We've, uh, accepted, uh, you know, we brought in Wally, we brought in, uh, E. So just being more aware of the students. One example is also we doubled our, we used to call it ESL, English, second language students into our district. We've doubled that number in the past two years or so. And, uh, so just being more aware of our changing population and being mindful of, of the students that are in front of us.
But that's a goal. I feel like we're accomplishing that. So should it be something that?
Well, that, that is, it was a goal about professional development of those staff members. So we'd be looking at maybe hiring some more people that, uh, coming in to start training our staff a little bit more about what's going on.
We also had a couple other goals that didn't quite get as many votes. Um, but those were to provide support to district administration to enable the successful completion of construction aspects of facilities across the district. And that is a goal that was the same as last year. There was also another goal, uh, to promote collaborative teaching, learning, and assessment environment that inspires creativity, innovation, and differentiation to support all learners. There were two other possible goals. I would suggest that we focus on those five goals and select one out of them.
And remember, these are just suggestions, so if you wanted to look at last year, you can modify them however you wish. And we had them subtracted last time as well.
Uh, and when do you have that?
Technically, we'd love to have them by July first, but, uh, it's, you know.
So could we review these in the next couple of weeks and by the next board meeting decide on what goals we want to have? Or just, or since we're missing two people right now, it'd be nice to have their input as well.
What goal did you, what goal last year did you mention?
Uh, number two and number seven. So number two is to support the district administration to enable the successful completion of the construction aspects of facilities across the district. That's the same as one from last year. A little awkward, but we can work on it. Um, and a goal number seven was to promote collaborative teaching, learning, and assessment environment that inspires creativity, innovation, and differentiation to support all learners. So those are the five. What I'd like to do is I'd like to send them out to everyone. And I'd like to ask that you all please respond with your suggestions and comments. And maybe we could at least come next time and we'll decide on which ones we want to do.
You want to start?
Yes, definitely. I'll send you an email.
All right, the five again.
I'll send, I'll give you those five again in an email form, and we can discuss that. Yes, I will send them to you by email. Um, we also had district goals. From what I understand, everyone who responded to me was fine with those district goals, which were to continue to implement, enhance, and evaluate ways to address enough health issues as necessary. Uh, to, uh, continue to explore and evaluate innovative learning opportunities for all students. Continue to evaluate the safety and security protocols of the district. And then the fourth one was continue to monitor the completion of current construction projects, evaluate the district's facilities, and update the long-range facility plan. No one seemed to have a problem with those, but you clearly got a comment. Oh, I thought you were raising your hand for us.
So, uh, these are both, these are the same goals we had last year and this year for the most part, uh, with small tweaks. But just remember, this is like more of a strategic plan. We really like these goals. These goals have done well for us. But what we've done each year is we've changed all the action plans underneath them. So underneath them, they usually have three or four different action plans. And each year, we've changed that and upgraded that. As we accomplish the other goals, we keep on just going deeper and deeper with these. So if those are the goals that we decide to go on, then again, I would create over the summer, the actual action plan. I'll share that with you, and you can give the lessons and the Ulan, that's how we.
And we're sure that we've had it.
If those are pretty good right now, then I would start working on them in the next month.
And you'll have also? I will send them out to everyone, um, wait two weeks to let people respond, and then. I will send them out to everyone, wait two weeks, let people respond, and then we'll start working on the action plans.
I think that the doctor now having just the five and four as opposed to all the past years, you can concentrate on three emails and say, what?
I will, I will get that out in an email version in the next day or so, and I look forward to your comments.
Dave, I have a question, so it's probably for Dr. Gorman. Dr. Gorman, do the teachers or the administrators or the teachers who are really with the kids, do they, can they recommend goals to help us? I don't know, can you explain the process of creating the goals for the district?
Yeah, so we could, I guess we could put out a survey of some sort, the way, right now is the way, you know, we get feedback from all throughout the year, how things are going, where our needs are, so talking with the administrators and principals, supervisors, we meet with the union on a daily basis, so we get a lot of these things, and then that's how, that helps, you know, drive a direction development, you don't believe in formally, I'm saying maybe one, X, Y, and Z, something you could look into if you want to.
I think, I think what that would probably fall on us, as Tom was saying, the district goals, I think have been too much static for several years, and the action plan underneath changes. So I would assume with input from supervisors and administrations in different buildings, you modify the action plan, and that's where we take the input from the building level and implement that into the district goals. So I think that, that's how we're going to get, I think that's how we're going to get the teacher and staff input into the district goals.
So they basically speak to the administrators, saying, this is what I need, this is what, so that's how.
Right, so, right, so, you know, they just happen organically all the time, but they don't do anything formal by saying, X, Y, Z, please give feedback on that, but they did something to this.
Well, I'm afraid you're going to turn the meeting.
No, I was not going, I am not going to turn it until you mention it later, like.
Actually, I was going to mention that I did send the email, I'm excited, I'm excited, it's a very large group of individuals, very excited, because it's nice. And then, yes, I have good news for the board. We have one hundred percent participation from our board members. We have exceeded our goal of a thousand dollars, we raised, yeah, twelve hundred dollars, and I want to thank Tom and Casey and Andrea, who's making a contribution with us. Kudos to the board, I hope to see you on June eighth. It'll be fun, yeah, let's hope to do that.
Thank you. Yes, I too was at National Honor Society, actually, and Mike, Josh, who's also there, we were, the two of us had the honor of welcoming our daughters into National Honor Society. It was a nice evening, wasn't it?
It was very nice, it was very joyfully.
And what's amazing is that, for me, seeing so many of the kids I actually know, I've met, I've spoken to, it was really just a very proud moment to see all these wonderful kids being recognized, I was like, sure. No, but I also, I'll also mention real quick, you know, one of the nicest about this job, other than the fact that it's free.
Is that paying as well?
Yeah, it pays so well. Is that we get to see the students come in, I don't know about our interview, but it is really a pleasure to come in and see the students, their enthusiasm and all the good things that they're doing. I mean, we get good news from people all over about all the great things that we're doing. In fact, I ran into Tom Purnell, there at the township committee meeting last week, and he was just gushing about all the good stuff we're doing here, so. Does anybody else have anything for the board? No? As for motion to adjourn. I was going to let him take off.